All right. 7:00 PM, December 7, 2016. I'd like to call the Planning Commission meeting to order with the clerk for the role.
Mr. Badger.
Here.
Mr. Halter.
Here.
Mr. Mansoros.
Here.
Mr. Paul. Vice Chairman Simpson.
Here.
And Chairwoman Keller.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion. We excuse that was not present.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Halter, second by Mr. Badger.
Mr. Badger.
Yes.
Mr. Halter.
Yes.
Mr. Mansoros.
Yes.
And Vice Chairman Simpson.
Yes.
Okay, item number two, the approval of the motion summary of the Planning Commission meeting held on November 2, 2016.
I'll move it be presented or approved as intended.
Motion by Mr. Badger.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Mansoros.
Mr. Badger.
Yes.
Mr. Halter.
Stand.
Mr. Mansoros.
Yes.
And Vice Chairman Simpson.
Yes.
Does that mean it doesn't pass?
Right.
It may not.
I wasn't here, I can't.
It's okay.
All right, before we jump into regular business this evening, there are only four members of the commission present this evening. So in the event that, what's a good way to put it, David, in the event that we would come to the decision that something might not be approved, we would want to let the applicants know that so that they could make a decision based on that.
Yep, and if you want to take the step of a formal straw poll before you might vote, you can do as well, but if you made your intentions known, I think that's sufficient to give the applicants the opportunity to table their case.
All right, item number three, regular business. Could the clerk please read the first item to the record?
Item A, 2016-2859, a request by Mr. and Mrs. Corey Hupp for approval of an alley vacation just east of Euclid Avenue between West Fountain Avenue and West Lincoln Avenue adjacent to eight parcels that encompass approximately 0.10 acres. It's tabled from October 19, 2016.
The subject case is going to remain on the table. Staff suggest that we table it to a specific date, which would be January 18 of next year, which is the next meeting.
Do we need to vote on that? Okay.
I'll move the table to the January 18 meeting.
Motion by Mr. Badger.
Second.
Second by Mr. Halter.
Mr. Badger.
Yes.
Mr. Halter.
Yes.
Mr. Mansoros.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Simpson.
Yes.
Motion is tabled. Could the clerk please read item B into the record?
Item B, 2016-3400, a request by Bowtown Delaware LTD for approval of a final subdivision plat for Old Colony Estates, Phase Two, consisting of 55 single-family lots on approximately 14.92 acres, Zoned R4, with tax limitations, medium-density residential district, and located on Wallace Drive, Vernon Avenue, and Pilgrim Circle.
Yeah, the subject site is okay north of Bowtown Road, actually located north of Phase One of Old Colony Estates, which is in the green on this map, it's actually Phase One. Phase Two is just north of that in the orange. It's Zoned R4, tax limitations. This is the aerial of the site, and actually they roughed in some of the utilities several years ago when they installed Phase One. Look at some history of this. This subdivision was approved in 2002, received an extension in 2005 by City Council. In 2008, they constructed Phase One, then the recession hit and nothing happened until 2014 when Ryan purchased the lots, and they started to build out the lots in Phase One, and they're almost complete. So now they're coming in for Phase Two because the engineering drawings and the zoning for Phase Two has expired since 2005. That's why we're here. Engineering department's reviewing the construction drawings as we speak. From a stormwater perspective, this subdivision, Old Colony, works in concert with Kensington Places, which is located to the east of this development, and Village Gates, which is located west. And over the years, there's been stormwater issues between these three subdivisions. So the engineer is requiring the applicant's engineer to model the stormwater again and determine what the appropriate mitigation would be to make sure the stormwater works between these three developments. And that will be determined after that study is completed. And actually, one of our last conditions on condition A addresses that in the report. The access to the site would be from, actually, this is the platen to the north is, north is to the top. This is the first section of the platen. This is the second section. The access is from Ferguson Road, which is in Phase One, and extends north on Wallace Drive, and it actually connects into Kensington Place, two locations, one on Wallace Drive to the north, and also Vernon Avenue, which will have an extension from Kensington. Vernon Avenue will extend from Kensington Place to the western leg of Vernon Avenue, which we haven't had that connection before, and now we finally have that connection with this phase. The lot sizes, actually, it'll be 55 single-family lots on almost 15 acres. The lot sizes range from 6,600 square feet to just above an acre. However, most of these lots are around 6,600 square feet because there's a gas line and some other easements through this site. That's why some of the lots aren't acre, they were oversized to allow the lots to be developable. The front yard setback should be consistent with the first phase at 25 feet and 30 feet rear and 15-foot sides. The size of the houses, minimum house size would be 1,250 square feet for a three-bedroom. Anything for a three-bedroom would require another 200 square foot for each bedroom to the total. Design of these houses would have to achieve compliance with the minimum guidelines of our residential design criteria, 25% natural materials on the first, on the front elevation, minimum eight-inch overhang on the entire house, minimum four-inch window trim or shutters, and higher-end vinyl siding. The lighting and landscape plan needs to be submitted for approval by the chief building official and the Shade Tree Commission respectively before construction drawings are approved. Parks and open space in Phase One, Ryan put in a park and with some amenities. That's supposed to be taken over by the homeowners association before this plat is approved. Construction drawings, that documentation needs to be submitted and recorded at the county. There's also a detention basin located in the rear of the lots on this northeast corner of the site. That's all, that's in a reserve area and will be maintained by the homeowners association. The site looks fairly vacant, doesn't look like there's any trees. However, during the construction, if any trees are taken out, they'd have to meet our, achieve compliance with our tree preservation regulations. Staff approved the final subdivision plan with eight conditions. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for staff?
Yeah, I have one. Completely slipped my mind. How come these houses are so small in what we wanted? You may have mentioned it in there, and I was reading it or something. You know, this is awfully small houses.
Our base code's 1,250 square feet, and apparently when this was approved back in early 2000, there was no determination to make them larger.
Wouldn't it fall on the point you have to come with a new code?
Not for that.
We've done that, we've done this before.
Yes, we have, generally not for that parameter with this, with the first phase. These are the same size as the first phase, although what we've seen is that the house sizes generally constructed at, they're bigger than this. These are minimums. So we're comfortable, we were comfortable moving forward this way, and they had some... But, like I said, a lot of those other ones are planned unit developments or planned mixed use overlay districts where we can increase the size of the house.
You know, I mean, well, I mean, I, okay, I can answer the question, just, you know, four-bedroom and 1,400 square feet.
Yep.
And if we're going to do, you know, two-story, that's a 700-square-foot footprint.
Well, if it's two-story, they're usually, they're usually 15, 16 hundred square feet. It's the one-story ranches.
These are all going to be ranches?
No, I'm just saying, the ranches are the ones that are the minimum size. Just constructability, they're coming in about 1,500 plus square feet. And a minimal. It's the ranches that get closer to the minimum.
So because this was approved this way, it stays this way. Because it's been, it's just been active, I guess.
It's been active since, yeah, this was approved back in 2002.
2002, so if somebody else came with one that was approved in 99, we would allow them to build under the old restrictions?
This is also a straight zoning district. It's not like Lance was alluding to in our planned developments. We have a little bit more leverage to discuss those things as future phases come in, we believe, and so we do that, recommend that to you. This is a straight zoning district where we just don't have that kind of safe outlet.
Question on the stormwater.
Mm-hmm.
Are we getting backups in some people's yards and things because we don't have an adequate outlet for the, I assume that one pond is for all of the subdivisions?
I defer.
Kensington or whatever.
Take the aggressive, I'd say in 11 years I've been here, the problem with the pond more so is that it generally doesn't have as much water in it as everybody would like, and so you get more algae and you get sort of that kind of stuff and get those kind of complaints, but I think Phase Two is going to help.
Well, they're kind of, initially, when it was first put in, it was actually holding so much that we were having that backup situation.
Initially.
Initially.
Those were years ago.
And then when the other phase came in, they, they put a second outlet. They put a second, another stage outlet on. Now, what we, what we found is there was, way back when Kensington was first built, I don't think the off-site area was taken, I think it was calculated correctly. So there is more flow going through there than what was originally thought in the original...
So that's why the additional model.
Right, exactly. And actually, what we're doing is going one step further to get another outlet with this phase, once they, and Chad's working on the model right now, that will help that situation even more. So what we've been trying to balance is getting, getting the water out of there that we need to get out of there without making it too shallow and thus turning, you know, creating the condition where we have the algae, so.
Just wanted to...
Yeah, there's definitely been an issue.
Complaints in the last few years on the aesthetics of...
Mm-hmm, yeah. And we do have, I believe there's one gentleman who has quite a...
So it's covered, yeah. Pick the north side?
Hmm, so.
I just want to know.
Yep.
I'll answer my question.
Any other questions for staff? Is the applicant here this evening? Like to come up, state your name and address for the record?
Jack Wendell, and the address is 536 South Wall Street, Columbus, 43215.
All right. Did you have anything you wanted to add to staff's presentation or...
I would like to clarify one thing. When he mentioned that the HOA takeover of the part land and its maintenance was a requirement before the plat could be approved, I think technically it's before the utilities and installation would be accepted.
Construction drawings yet.
And the final plat recorded. This approval tonight is not associated with that.
Right. Correct. Okay. It's actually, the way we have it recommended right now is that that's formalized prior to acceptance of the public agreement. So typically, you get these approvals through council, you build the base infrastructure, it's accepted by council. Then you file plat, then you start building houses, so it's in there at the acceptance.
Right, right, okay. I guess the other thing I would like to maybe address the question about the house size. The houses are all, that they have built in Phase One, are all larger than this minimum that is in the requirements. They're very nice. The place has been filling up quickly. They're beautiful houses. Lots are nice, and we just want your approval so we can push it on to the rest, so we can have 105 new residents in Texas.
Any questions for the applicant?
Curious, what's the price point that you're looking at?
They are, they're in the range of anywhere from 250, 275. Ryan has done a good job and excellent product. We had other, you know, people come to us wanting to develop, but they could never come up with a product to this, this level. That's kind of why it didn't get, of well, it's economic conditions, but that's more or less why it didn't get developed because we wanted the right...
Okay. Anything else for the applicant?
Mr. Wendell, can you repeat your address, please?
536 South Wall, W A L L Street.
Got it.
43215.
Got it, thank you.
All right, financial district.
I wish. Brewery district in this town.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay.
All right. Assuming that there's no public comment this evening, bring it back to the commission for action.
Now, just for purposes of straw polling, I have no objection to the project.
You do, huh?
I don't.
I don't either.
I make a motion. We approve 2016-34100, request by Bowtown Limited for final, for approval of the final subdivision plat for Old Colony Estates, along with all staff's conditions and recommendations.
Motion by Mr. Halter.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mansoros.
Mr. Badger.
Yes.
Mr. Halter.
Yes.
Mr. Mansoros.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Simpson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Much. I appreciate it. Good luck.
All right, if the clerk could read item C into the record, please?
Item C, Willowbrook West, number one, 2016-3396, a request by TNR Properties for approval of a preliminary development plan for Willowbrook West consisting of 96 single-family attached units on approximately 15.18 acres, Zoned R6 PUD, multi-family residential district with a planned unit development overlay district, west side North Howe Road, just north of Arthur Place. Item two, 2016-3397, a request by TNR Properties for approval of preliminary subdivision plat for Willowbrook West consisting of 96 single-family lots on approximately 15.18 acres, Zoned R6 PUD, multi-family residential district with a planned unit development overlay district located on the west side of North Howe Road, just north of Arthur Place.
The subject site is on Howe Road, it's actually South Howe Road, it's there in the agenda, and it's, it's Zoned R6. This map shows B4 in the northern portion of it. That B4 line is actually per the PUD that was approved in 99, can move, and it, per case, about five years ago, it moved just north, so it's actually all in R6. This scenario of the site, it's pretty much farmland vacant, and some of the history of this, again, it goes back to 1999, about 282 acres in this area were approved as a planned unit development, which included single-family, two-family attached, multi-family, commercial and industrial uses. A lot of it's been built out as Adelaide Park, Millbrook, Branding Commons, Arthur Place, Village of Westbrook, Willowbrook Farms, Willowbrook East since then. This is one of the last pieces that's coming in. In 2007, Arthur Place came in, and it was actually on this site, and in 2008, they flipped it down to where other places now, leaving this site here. And in 2008, the portion in front of this is retail, that came in, they revised the zoning to that for the, to update the development requirements for the retail area and require a buffer between the retail and this site. It was kind of complicated history. Now the developers come in with these 96 single-family attached units on 96 lots, so they'd be feet simple. It's similar to a condo, but there'd be lots there. From a zoning perspective, Arthur Place in this area allowed 180, 180 dwelling units, which it could have been apartments, multi-family condos. Arthur Place was 80 dwelling units, so the 96 units that they're putting in is actually less than what they're allowed in this area. This is a preliminary plan and preliminary plat. After this, a final plan and a final plat would have to be approved by Planning Commission and Council. This is the first step of a two-step process. There is development text associated with this from 1999. It's not as specific as we typically have today, but there are some requirements in this development, and this report addresses those. Engineering's reviewing the preliminary plans of this proposal. This is a site plan. It's hard, hard to read, there's not much graphics on it, it's all lines. It's pretty much, the main entrance is from South Howe Road adjacent to Rock Mill Road. It's pretty much a radial interior street with one bisectant, and you get all the two fam, or the attached units like a subdivision just off those roads. There is a second entrance into the site on the southwest corner of the site. There is a access easement and an access point to Arthur Place to access the right-in, right-out. That needs to be a permanent access, and actually, there's an easement that's been recorded to allow that back in 2008 for this site. Within the development, the streets are private, 24 feet wide, built to public standards, no parking on either side. There are some sidewalks on this plan. Staff has recommended that there be sidewalks on one side of each of the private streets. They have probably, three or four of the streets have some sidewalks, but not all of them. That's one condition that we're requesting. Layout, as I indicated, it's pretty typical layout. The site's pretty maxed out. There is a retention pond in the southwest corner along South Howe Road, and there is some green space along the southern portion of the site in the backs of the houses where there's a pedestrian path that accesses the mailbox, the common mailbox for the entire site. Again, this site could have been all apartments, two or three stories, so this product's probably one of the least intensive products they could have put on this site. As I indicated, they are ranch-style attached units. The minimum size would be 1,350 square feet. They'd be set back 25 feet from the street, 10 feet between each unit. And the rear yards would allow a sunroom, a Florida room, and a deck that protrude 10 feet from the property line it's adjacent to. The building design, here's an example of what they're proposing. There'd be ranch that have a stone, limestone or brick, wainscoting along the bottom of it with vinyl siding, and the garage doors would be upgraded. They'd have to be window trim and eight-inch overhangs on the development also or on the buildings themselves. A landscaping plan, a comprehensive landscaping plan would be required at final development plan submittal, which would require street trees, individual building landscaper in perimeter buffering, and per the development text, the north is to the right, the eight-to-10-foot, eight-to-12-foot high mound would be required adjacent to the retail sub, retail site to the north of this site. It would have to be landscaped like the South Hall, South Howe Road landscaping mound. It would have to be maintained by the HOA. When this comes into our final plans, we'll have specific site plans for that would be required. Tree preservation, there does not appear to be any trees on the site, so that's probably not an issue. The landscaping and lighting plans would have to be approved by the Shade Tree Commission and the chief building official respectively. Any signage would have to meet our minimum sign requirements in the gateways and corridors plan. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary development plan with 21 conditions and the preliminary subdivision plat with 21 conditions. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. We'll just note for you that obviously our applicant has been detained tonight. He is not here, I'm trying to get in touch with him, but no response yet. Would say that the builder in this case would be Ryan Holmes, that's really their plant, even though it's part of this Willowbrook, this old Willowbrook PUD development, but it's Ryan Holmes. So I believe Jim Olin is going to be here this evening, and hopefully he still will be, but from our perspective as staff, it's pretty straightforward, given the Willowbrook PUD text that's involved.
Says TNR Properties then.
It's Medrock Land today.
Okay.
And the way their mind works is that they'll buy lot by lot and build, that's their business model for single-family homes through this. They've developed a plan with TNR, obviously.
Okay.
Approvable, approving of it, but the elevation that you see has been designed specifically for this site.
Okay.
And it's Ryan Holmes' design.
So many sites that we've proved have a minimum of 25% natural materials. Why only 15 on this one?
The text for Willowbrook only requires the inclusion of some natural materials. And this is the percentage, I don't know if you had the, it may show up there, Lance, but the, because these are ranch-style and the way that they look, wainscoting was a way to get some percentage in there, it ends up being more than just some. I mean, we calculated the math for you, but, so they've met that test under their zoning text. And it's also consistent with what we have approved under the same zoning text for Arthur Place immediately to the south. They used brick there, this is the stuff.
Procedurally, if there's nobody here representing the applicant, does the commission take action?
You can. We have many times in the past, we've actually done it at council as well when there are transportation or communication issues. So that has, has happened, it's not usual, but it has happened in the past.
It's not a requirement that they have to be here.
It's not a requirement that they have to be here, obviously.
They can't defend themselves.
If I was the applicant, I'd like to be able to defend myself or answer questions perfectly. There they are, just in time. So we danced long enough that they're here. So if you have any questions, you can ask them.
Well, any more questions for staff?
I, well, whether it's for staff or not, I guess it probably is, Jennifer, really. Public street standards, I just got done doing a study of a private street-type development where the curbs were at gutter plates that were like this and this, and the curves were cracked, probably 30% or so, something. We have a standard that would be higher than that.
Yeah, our code states that, that private streets still have to be built to public street standards, so I believe we're looking at inverted crown on this one.
Right, yes, I mean, I think there's, Ron's having, you know, I see, I think that there's, the main thing, Robert, I think you're concerned about is, is the stability of the construction. So we're going to use RCC pavement, which is a city spec, and so from a depth standpoint of the streets, it'll be, it'll be the same thing, but from a stormwater, we're taking the stormwater in the middle of the street with catch basins.
Like, like the one on the south?
Yes, just like the one on the south.
Well, I'm, I'm more concerned with the curb not cracking, structurally sound, enough section that it's not going to crack except where you want it to, which, it was a real problem, and this one I just got done doing a study on, and I just want to make sure that...
We'll meet the same standards as one on the south, actually, we'll exceed it, because I don't think they used reconstituted concrete on that one.
I think that was a concrete, it's, it's been a wall. I think it was an actual concrete base, so...
Ron, Jim, could you maybe just, for the record, might as well just come up and say your name and your address, just so clerk's got...
Ron Sabacino with Medrock Development, and this is...
Jim Olin from Ryan Holmes, 7077 Sandymark Place in Westerville.
I think the only thing that I would add is, without there being street parking here, there's not an awful lot of parking spots if someone decides to have game day at their house or anything like that. Just a comment that I noticed looking at the plan.
One of the things we talked about, commissioners, they certainly give their answer, is that we definitely don't want some off-street parking spaces at the end of Blaisen Lane. You'll see that in a condition. But one of the things that at least Jim and I have talked about is trying to fit a couple of those spaces back in. You see there, some of them are cut in there on the north side at Blaisen Lane, and there's room for at least a couple, maybe a couple, three more. In total, that'll give them about the same amount as Arthur Place. Granted, Arthur Place is senior-only, income-restricted. This is market rate, so... And you can judge for yourself the difference in that market if you want to, but at least they'll have those spaces back. And it's roughly the same as the development.
The average age of the occupant is expected to be older than me or Jim Holder.
She's like Ron's mother.
I agree. I think it's, you know, it's like having a house, if it's a holiday or something like that, and you're having their family in for something, parking could become a problem. Yeah, I guess that's...
The other thing here, too, is the two-car garages with two spaces in the driveway. Theoretically, you're not going to park the driveway all the time, you park the garage, but if you get people over, they can park.
People actually park in a garage?
When they don't fill it with all the stuff?
Anytime I look, they get so full, you couldn't get a car in. Yeah, I guess with any place like this, I know what you're saying, is it, you know, but Ryan Wade, of course, all those guys have about six or seven cars, so...
That's a good point. It's good to be you.
How many do you have?
I got two, but that's plenty. Just a reminder, there are only four commissioners. It takes an unanimous vote to pass anything, or else it goes forward as a technical denial. So what we usually try to do is make it clear the intention of how they're going to vote before they actually take a formal vote to give you an opportunity to table a case if that's what you want to do.
Now, I really don't have a problem with it at all. I looked at the Arthur Place, and it looked pretty simple to me, and I don't really think there's a huge parking problem if people, once they see that somebody's parked on one side of the street, they're not going to park right across from it because they can't get through. So you always have one lane. Now, police and fire, that's another kind of an issue, but I don't think that's happened often enough situation that would be a major concern, at least from my perspective. So I have no problem with the request.
I have no problem.
I'm good as well.
So you want a table, right?
Yes. We'd like to come back again and talk more.
Oh, we can make that happen.
Be about a month and a half.
All right. Any more questions for the applicant then? All right, bringing it back to the commission, public comment. No one? Brandon? No one in the house this evening. So bringing it back to the commission, what's the wish of the commission?
I'd move to approve application 2016-3396 for the preliminary development plan as submitted.
Motion by Mr. Badger?
Along with all staff.
Along with all staff's conditions.
Motion by Mr. Badger? Second by Mr. Halter?
Mr. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Halter?
Yes.
Mr. Mansouris?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Simpson?
Yes.
Okay. No, it's a requirement to do both of them. Okay, I'd move to approve the application 2016-3397 for TNR Properties' approval of preliminary subdivision plat with all staff recommendations.
Motion by Mr. Badger?
Second.
Second by Mr. Halter?
Mr. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Halter?
Yes.
Mr. Mansouris?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Simpson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Gentlemen, since you're here, we're going to flip this around for council on Monday, but it's just the first reading, so I don't know whether they're going to activate...
This is coming Monday?
You're correct. You should be here to present the case.
Thank you. Planning Director's report? You can't offend him.
Is this thing on? Oh, is it? Okay. I forgot. I don't have anything specific for you, except to remind you that we're moving our meeting in January to January 18th, and everybody should have happy and healthy and safe holidays, and we should all remember today on December 7th. It's an important day in our history. Before you go to bed tonight, just say all thanks, I guess. The last thing I have to report to you is that unfortunately, this will be the last meeting that Ms. Stockler is going to be with us, as she's going on to bigger and better. So we wish her well, and we'll miss the hell out of you. So that's my comment. I appreciate your service.
Yeah, thank you for your service.
Oh, thank you. It's been a joy to serve on this committee. I really have enjoyed the test. It's one of my favorite parts of my job, so...
Night meetings?
Well, you know, aside from the night meeting, it's always been a real good group of people to work with. I appreciate your support.
Jen, how long you been?
It would be 11 years in March, so we're just shy of 11 years. Yeah, crazy.
11-year itch? 11-year itch or anything going on? I'm saying, you never know.
You know, the future is murky.
Commission member comments and discussion? I guess we'll start over here and work our way around.
Well, I'm just, I'm pleased to see some of these old things come off the table and actually begin to get done. It's, again, I keep falling back to where I come from, and we're lucky to get a subdivision every 10 years once. Boy, I forgot to ask a question tonight, too. Can I do that now, just unofficially? There was a specification that sidewalks be on the streets in the colony. Is that on both sides or one?
An old colony, they'll have sidewalks on both sides.
Yeah, they're public street, yeah.
It didn't specify that, but the other one did specify. I meant to ask that.
Because of private streets.
Apologize for my inadequacy.
Because of private streets in the other one, they're hard to see in the diagram. And it's preliminary, but they had had sidewalks in certain locations in like Arthur Place. Now, that's laid out differently, where you have at least a perimeter sidewalk so that anybody in the unit can just cross the street or happen to be right in front of them. Here, it's laid out a little different. So that, we had a condition in there for it to be on the frontage of every street. And so that'll be a little bit of a tweak from their preliminary.
Mariana in Royce County, the developers would say that will kill the project, it'll be too much money. We won't put any sidewalks, and committee council would always pass it. I just, I mean, it's just...
We just...
Don't, I mean, that happens here, we just won't let you hear that.
So anyway, I'm glad to see that happen, and I'm sorry to see you go because you've got the nugget.
I know, I know. I agree.
No, it's too late to change your minds.
Yeah.
It kind of...
It's Speedway up north. The building is going quickly, and I did see them up there on Hill of Miller moving the electric poles to the south. But, you know, there was a lot of roadwork up there. Are they aware or are they aware that they won't open until all the roadwork is done? I mean, there is...
Yeah, they... That's ironic, they're the second person to mention it to me this week. Now, they still do not have their sanitary, the off-site sanitary run and the water run, which will all go before the roadway gets constructed. So they couldn't occupy if they wanted to because they don't have service there right now. But we are going to reiterate that. We have a meeting with them on Friday, and I am going to reiterate the importance of that.
That's a lot of roadwork up there.
Yeah, that's getting too cold.
Yeah, I was going to say, I mean, they could have that lot, I don't know about the water and sewer, but I mean, they could have a lot done, pavement, and ready to go.
Next 30 days.
And I'm only one person, and I understand that. But there's no way I'd give a knock to that street when the roadwork is done.
It's integral.
Because that is one of the things we sold those neighbors on up there on how, you know, how this is going to help up there and to allow one gallon of gas to be pumped. Without that, I think it'd be a slap in the face of those people.
Commercial properties always do that. They always rush the foundation, get the structure up, and then go back, then step back and do all the infrastructure. I think with this particular case, there was some easements tying with those type of things, too, that slowed down the off-site work. But they, like I said, they couldn't even have a service today if they wanted to because there's no sanitary...
It's also have a program store.
Yeah, but I'm just trying to remember to get it in the closet.
Wait, yeah, I know.
Jennifer will just tell them no.
It's just that store is programmed to be built. You got to remember 2016. Speedway's in the business of selling gas, not building buildings, so they'll do it however they want to, and they'll get it all done.
And they are...
Good point. Obviously landscaping's going to come in spring.
Well, I saw where they were moving or putting in new poles, beginning to say, to move it back so they can widen it further. I saw that, and I thought, okay, gee, a lot more than 23.
Most construction projects are really pressing right now, Jen can tell you, is to get, to take advantage of the weather that passed.
I'm not sure if the state slowed it down, you know, as far as, you said, the state had concrete.
For asphalt now.
They go through.
Well, the other thing is that hillsman road is a concrete pavement, so not that we enjoy it when they try to pour concrete in the winter, but you can if they winter protect the concrete. So they could, you know, if they get a good break somewhere in the winter, they could get that, get hillsman portion done.
So by the way, I think, gee, hey, you know, really roadwork up there. This is going to be, you know, that building should be done in hardly 60 to 90 days.
I will work back to you on my meeting on Friday, so...
Well, they got to get, they'll have concrete to pour inside the area, too, whether you have parks and stuff like that. Other than that, I'm just happy to walk in the park.
Wish everyone a very Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and Jen, best of luck to you and your family.
Thank you.
We hope we still get to see you every now and then around town.
I'll be around. Run, kick it, run, be around.
Might have to get a smart car to save on gas.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
Want to be on planning commission?
Oh, wouldn't that be fun?
She can't, she'll listen.
Yeah.
That's right.
To Delaware. She'll study.
Well, I don't really have anything this evening. I haven't observed a windmill in a while, so I'll try to make it one of my resolutions to get back on the windmill observation.
Windmill, they're turning.
Every now and then, when I see it, I feel like it's not turning, but I haven't been consistently watching. I'm predisposed to the windmill.
You know, when he retires, he's just going to stand up.
Just going to stand up there and watch that.
He's got to watch it.
Yeah, you know, a very cheerful, festive and safe holiday season to everybody.
I hope you all get what you want for Christmas, and Santa is good to you.
And you'll be nice, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Still not too late to change your mind. Next regular meeting, as David mentioned, is January 18th, 2017, and we'll call this meeting adjourned as of 7:45 PM.